The Monday, December 19th, 2022 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dave.
Your Honor, before we proceed, I'd like to amend or seek an amendment to our agenda to add a resolution authorizing the purchase of a VAC truck, Resolution 22-R-94.
94. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We have no approval of minutes, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions and Awards, where we have a proclamation for Sidney Ramsey. If you would meet me at the podium. We have a proclamation here I'd like to present to you, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and read it because it really, really hits on the points that I think are so important to the project that you've completed. Whereas the City of Vandelia strives to recognize and honor those who have contributed to the betterment of Vandelia by giving their time, energy to the emergence community issues. Whereas Sidney Ramsey is a proud Vandelia resident and a member of Girl Scout Troop 32-513 from, I believe it's Carroll?
My Girl Scout Troop is at St. Christopher.
Chris, okay. All right, thank you. Who is pursuing the Gold Star Award, which is the highest achievement award that you can attain. And whereas Sidney chose a project that seeks to inform Vandelia residents of the methods used by scam artists to defraud people and their money. Whereas Sidney created Project Scam Detectors, which is included informational pieces in both English and Spanish to highlight the techniques used by these bad actors, and followed by the design effort by speaking to local organizations to alert them of the scams that are out there. And whereas her efforts were targeted to reach Vandelia's senior citizen population, a group that is disproportionately targeted by these scams. Whereas Sidney's efforts will undoubtedly serve to protect Vandellians of all ages from scams and rip-offs that could financially be devastating to them. Whereas Sidney has offered her work to numerous other agencies who are using it to protect their population, including not only the City of Vandelia, but the City of Huber Heights and the Green County Prosecutor's Office. Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 20th, 2022, as Sidney Ramsey Day here in Vandelia. And in Vandelia, I'd like to call on all of our citizens and employees to show their appreciation to Sidney for her work and her thoughtful actions designed to protect the people of Vandelia from those who would try to take advantage of them. All right? Thank you. Stand your bases for meeting time.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that project, and unfortunately, this is something that we all are encountering these days. I mean, I'm, as a Realtor, we are experiencing this every day. I myself was a potential victim of wire fraud from people just sending out information fraudulently. So I'm sure this information is going to be very helpful to our residents, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments.
Merry Christmas, y'all.
Merry Christmas.
Mine will be quick and easy. I would just like to take a poll.
Name and.
Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I just took a cough drop, and I'm gonna... Would I get closer to this?
That's better.
But we need your name and address.
Cindy Dugan, 794 Walt Smith Way in Delia, Ohio.
Thank you.
I would just like to take a poll this evening to see where you stand on the warehouses in general. Mr. Went? Yes, I'm in favor of the warehouses. No, I'm not.
Ms. Dugan, this is comments from citizen, or comments from citizens. I'm happy to sit down and talk with you anytime that you want to, but I'm not going to participate in a poll, but thank you very much.
I am commenting as a citizen.
Cindy, I will comment that it's not a yes or no answer. There, it's a very complicated issue. We're still looking at all the information that we have. I can't sit here and say yes or no because there's, there's a lot of things that play into my yes or no. So I would be glad to sit down and talk to you about how I feel, or what I think, anytime, but I think it's just not that simple to say yes or no because there's serious consequences any direction we take, so.
True.
All right.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Lord have mercy.
Tom Greis, 10-400 North Castle Road. I'll start with the easy one first. Tonight, you guys have a second reading of an ordinance for rezoning a property at 7249 North Dixie Drive, taking it from highway business to industrial. As I commented two meetings ago, because I missed the last meeting, that property is situated between two different apartment complexes, one in the City of Dayton, one in Vandelia. So you're potentially looking, putting a residential, you're putting an industrial facility, a concrete processing facility, between two high-density residential locations. I believe the applicants have offered their good faith estimate of what they expect to have. I am concerned that while that may be in good faith, situations change, times change, in that the long-term impact is that this will put an industrial facility that we don't know will be a concrete processing facility in close proximity to those two residents, those two apartment complexes. Because once it's zoned industrial, should something come up, they decide not to do the concrete processing, or at some later date when they cease that operation and that land becomes available for further development, it will be zoned industrial, and there will be literally almost no restrictions on use of that property. And I think you guys need to take that into consideration when you have your vote. I'm sorry I wasn't here to make that point. You had the vote on the first reading, so I will make that point now. But I think when you look at the future of Vandelia, those two large apartment complexes that are down there, I think you need to give due consideration to what that potential impact is, of that being industrial long-term. Nothing against the Stamp family. I've done business with them, and I can appreciate what they're doing. And I believe that for what they've proposed, it would probably be okay because they're talking normal business hours, not 24/7. They're talking about being, having pretty good standoff from the residences and doing noise and dust abatement. So notwithstanding that, I believe there are long-term implications that you guys need to consider for that piece of property. I didn't take, she took my throat loss in here. So that brings me to the warehouses. I know there's concern about potential litigation. Should the council take action that would prohibit or somehow impede the development of the Castle Road property for warehouses? I would argue that you're likely going to face that litigation one way or another, either from the residents, because it moves forward, from CSX, because you do take some action that inhibits that land use. Whether that occurs with this council, or whether it occurs with different council members may be a matter of an issue. But I think there is risk regardless of how you go. I think there is a risk for multiple areas regardless of how you go. I believe what the citizens are looking at, and what we believe are options for council, would be a zoning not industrial, would not allow warehouses, but would allow further development of that property in a very useful manner. I believe I would like to offer facilitating some interactions between council members and citizens as to what we might consider to be an appropriate, an appropriate use for that property. I know you guys can't meet as a majority because of the sunshine laws, but I think it would be beneficial if members of the council, potentially the city manager, had an opportunity to sit down with residents and talk about what options are, and what the citizens might find as being acceptable. Because we are not necessarily against the development of the property, against the development of a warehouse that's a million square foot, that runs hundreds of thousands of trucks in and out of the property, and runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365. So, that said, we look forward to seeing what actions you guys might choose to take. We look forward to seeing whether or not you choose to take action, because that decision impacts what the citizens choose to do. Our options range from an initiative petition to try and force rezoning, an initiative petition to change the zoning code to take out the warehouses from a conditional use in the office industrial park area, and make it a conditional use for industrial, as it is for the industrial innovative area. And it also includes the right to seek recall of council members. So as we consider our options, we look to the seven of you for leadership, because you guys are the leaders of the City of Vandelia. I understand the city manager runs the day-to-day operations, but we look to you guys for leadership. To be quite frank, this issue's been around since September. The issue's been around longer than September, but you guys were largely challenged by me back in September to take some type of action. And I haven't seen the leadership I expected of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the time that I should comment on 14B, the variance request? Is that correct?
Hold on one second. Yes, go ahead.
Yes. My name is Harold Brown. I am the CFO for SVG Properties, who is the owner of 819 East National Road. I represent Steve Van Gorder, our owner, who's out of town this evening. In respect, I wrote a letter to you about a week and a half ago, and I just wanted to iterate, we request that you approve the variance to allow this construction project to go on. The Morse Road Development Project has had been over almost a year in the making, and the proposal is a $6 million facility, which is not primarily a fueling center, it's actually a restaurant with a store and a refueling center as well. And I believe they say they're going to approximately employ, what, 30 to 40 people, and it's a $6 million renovation of a property that has been idle for quite some time, there's a lot of vacant land near it. The three landowners have come together, and it's taken a year to bring that in there. It's my understanding that the purchaser does not need all the land, and they are going to donate the surplus land to the city for green space, or whatever the City of Vandelia likes. We at SVG Properties believe that this is definitely in the best interest of the City of Vandelia. We have received numerous offers to purchase that property in the past year. We have been under contract with the existing purchaser who is proposing this renovation, and so we have not entertained those offers. However, if this variance is not approved, the project, the $6 million renovation, 40 employees, will be scrapped, and we will sell to the highest bidder. Right now, the property at 819, which is on the northeast corner, the purchasers who are looking at buying that are very, very small operations who maybe employ two, five people. I was a CPA for 20 years in the City of Dayton with Thorn Lewis and Duncan and Barnes Denig, and I was a partner in the firm when I left approximately a year ago to join SVG. My experience with small business owners is that if the variance is not approved, and SVG Properties does sell that property to one of these small businesses, from my experience, they will invest just enough money to renovate the facility to suit their particular business needs, but they will do little or nothing to improve the actual property. Also, businesses have very low tolerance for change. It was said that people were thinking that maybe another facility, instead of the proposed fueling center and restaurant, might come in, but that is highly unlikely. I believe this is a one-time opportunity, because the people that we sell it to, when they undergo to move their business into this facility, it is highly unlikely, in my professional opinion, that they would be willing to sell or participate in what we have gone through over the last year to try to bring this to a finish. So with all due respect, SVG Properties at 819 Vandelia Road, National Road, we believe that it would be a very wise decision, and definitely in the best interest of the City of Vandelia, to approve this project. It would not be the only place. I have one other thing. I have a client of mine was a large fuel distributor, and they own several fueling centers, many of which are directly across the street, within 300 feet of other fueling centers. And from my experience working with those companies, is that having that synergy actually enhances the area. It actually attracts people, and it actually makes it a better place to do business for everybody involved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Kalash Patel. I own the 825 East National Road. We used to have a hotel as a crossroad motel. We're losing the business, we closed down, and then we tear down. Now property's sitting last 16 years, empty, and I'm paying 20, I'm paying their taxes, and I've worked 24 hours to pay my taxes. It's $12,000 a year. It's too much. I approached so many people, nobody want to do business. Finally, I have somebody came to here to open the business, and my request to you guys, can you please approve the project? It's too much, I'm paying taxes. I'm not getting younger, I'm getting older. I run my other business, and I work 24/7 to pay my this bill. So if you can, please, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
My name is Scott Martin, 1072 Romanus Drive. I'm just curious to follow up with Cindy Dugan. A few meetings ago, Councilmember Forrest gave her personal opinion about Sheets, and followed it up with the fact that that would not affect her vote, and I'm just curious why that's different, not to give your personal opinion, not saying that would affect your vote, but I kind of see it as a similar situation.
Similar to what?
What Ms. Dugan brought up earlier, about the warehouse situation. You said, "I don't want to give a personal opinion because there's a lot of variables," but you gave your personal opinion before, but followed it up and clarified it and said that would not affect, necessarily affect my voting, I'm just telling my personal opinion. So she asked your personal opinion, and she basically was shot down.
I told her I would sit down with her and discuss that with her. It's too complicated to sit up here for an hour and go through all the thoughts that will make my business decision as opposed to my personal opinion.
I don't think she was necessarily asking for that. I think she was asking for her personal opinion, like you stated before, your personal opinion doesn't necessarily mean that's how you're going to vote, because it's a very complex issue.
The fact that I enjoyed and thought Sheets was a good place to stop, and a clean, and offered a lot, has nothing to do with whether I think we can legally and morally place that business in that location when we have ordinances dictating that.
Well, and I'm not saying it, it does. I'm just saying that that was a personal opinion situation, and you made very clear separation between personal opinion and voting, so I thought maybe that situation was somewhat similar.
Not at all.
A personal opinion could be given, doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be how you're going to vote.
Correct. In both situations. Any situation.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. You just reiterated exactly what I'm saying. A personal opinion could be given, doesn't mean that's how you're going to vote. She just asked for a personal opinion.
And I just explained to you that I could sit up here and give you my personal opinion, but I'm not going to because there's, it's very complicated, and there's, even on my personal opinion, on this issue, on the warehousing issue.
Yeah, and like I said, I just thought it was, I just wanted to get up here and make the comment, because I thought it was a similar situation where opinion could be differentiated between what you're actually going to vote, so.
Not in this situation, as far as I'm concerned, but.
That's my statement. That's my statement. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Beth Langford, 410 C, South Brown School Road, Vandelia. So I'm going to follow up with both of those, but I'm going to come from a different angle. If I was to take a poll, not of you folks, but of these folks, and they would say, "No, we don't want warehouses," and I think you all know that, so just thought I'd put that out there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report. We'll start with some information items. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This weekend, I have to tell you that our Public Works crews were out and about all weekend. There was a sewer collapse, a 12-inch line that you might have seen construction going on, on the off-ramp, so if you're taking 75 South and you get off at National Road, they were, they were out there all night. It was cold, it was wet, they dug a big hole. Ultimately, it was, they made the right call, deemed it an unsafe condition. We got a contractor with larger equipment in, the group that's doing the utility extension, Outdoor Enterprises. I know that in addition to the staff, Director Cron, I saw him out there when I stopped out with his bibs and his safety green on, and he was out there for several hours with the guys. We salted mains and bridge decks, Sunday, 1:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. And then there were two water main breaks yesterday. One was on Enola. One was on Enola, and that was Sunday at about 10:00 a.m. And then there was another one that, I don't know how you could miss it, was on Dixie and West Alkaline, and that was a 12-inch main that basically drained the Attica Water Tower. And so basically, on these three emergency repairs, we had 205 and a half hours in on those. That was done safely. We're working on the utility system stuff, but I know last night Mr. Cron was back out there again, just checking on things, but, you know, really, our Public Works technicians did an outstanding job, and so I'd like to commend them for that. In other information, city offices will be closed December 23rd, Friday, and then also Monday, December 26th. City offices will also be closed on Monday, January 2nd. First council meeting in January will be on January 3rd, that is a Tuesday. The second meeting is also on a Tuesday. The rec center will be open December 24th from 7:00 a.m. until noon. There's some information up there. It'll be closed on the 25th. December 31st, the VRC will be open 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and closed New Year's Day. Other information that I would bring up, Director Clark was informed last week that he received another grant. And so I know, I feel like every meeting I'm coming to, you're talking about staff and all the grants that we're getting, and that's because I am, it's excellent. That award's for just under $10,000. That's going to go into Robinette Park, that's a Brighter Tomorrow's grant, and that's from the Montgomery County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and that's going to help with the accessible restroom that we're going to try to put in there. Also, I advise you that a mailer is going out to residents. It's going to all residents advising on the utility rate updates. Residents can go to vandeliaohio.org/utilities. This mailer will have that link and also a QR code with brief information. Following up from Ms. Brenda Todd, the Todd family came and expressed concern with the fire lanes, crosswalk, parking issues related to Kroger several months ago. Lieutenant Walker received a thank you card, thanking both his efforts and the rest of staffs, that has been, those issues have been resolved, and that was a result of resident comments that came. This weekend, the community calendar and annual report was delivered, and then also the new ladder truck is going into service today. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. And we have no action items or any old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-89. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution awarding the bid for the installation of touchless entry doors at the Vandelia Recreation Center, requested by the Parks and Recreation Department to Modern Entrance Systems, Inc., at the lowest and best proposed price of $44,768.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the Parks and Recreation Department solicited proposals for the Vandelia Rec Center entry project from five companies. The purpose of the request for a proposal was to identify and to select a qualified and experienced firm for the design and installation of the new glass and aluminum storefront entry system at the VRC that includes a touchless entry system at both the main and west entry points of the facility. Modern Entrance Systems, Inc. of Beaver Creek, Ohio, submitted a complete and qualifying proposal of $44,768 for the project. Funding for this project is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, in which $45,000 was budgeted for this specific project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-89 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to approve Resolution 22-R-89 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-90. Mr. McDonald?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster 3500D requested by the Parks and Recreation Department from Century Equipment of Hamilton at the State of Ohio contract bid price, not to exceed $52,000, and requesting council declare the current 2013 Toro Sidewinder 3500D being replaced surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The Parks and Recreation Department is recommending the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster 3500D Sidewind Trim mower through the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing contract at a price not to exceed $52,000 from Century Equipment. Due to industry-wide volatility in pricing and unpredictable delivery date projections, Toro is unable to give an exact price at this time, but is estimating an increase prior to established delivery dates. The.
The Sourcewell contract is for 22% off the manufacturer suggested retail price, which is currently $57,619. The 2022 golf maintenance capital improvement budget has $38,000 allotted for the purchase, so we're recommending using a balance of capital funds from the Golf Course Wellhouse Project to bring our total funds to $52,000. Should Sourcewell contract price increase to above our $52,000 limit, we're not obligated to purchase the unit.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-R-90 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-90 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-91.
Resolution authorizing an agreement with Sandy's Towing for towing and impounding services for the Division of Police.
Thank you. Mr. Wimp.
Thank you, Your Honor. In November 2020, the Division of Police entered into a service agreement with Sandy's Towing for towing and impounding services. This agreement was for two years and renewable for an additional two-year increments if mutually agreed to by both the city and Sandy's Towing. Sandy's Towing has consistently been prompt and professional when responding to towing requests, provided liability insurance certificates, and is capable of meeting all towing standards and requirements for removal, towing, and storage of vehicles. Sandy's Towing also maintains a locally owned storage lot at 10530 Northwoods Boulevard and provided a revised fee schedule as requested. I recommend that city council extend the two-year service agreement with Sandy's Towing for police towing requests.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-91.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 22-R-91 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-92.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for right-of-way acquisition services for the Vandelia Bike Way Connector Project with O.R. Colon Associates, LLC. in the amount of $48,315.
Thank you. Mr. Wimp.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This is a project that we received CMAC funding for north of $2 million. We're in the final stages of the design for the Bike Way Connector Project. A couple of things that have come up in the design require a modification of the contract with our consultant, that's LJB, to complete the plans. These are being foisted upon us by ODOT, and so they were not anticipated in the original contract. First, they're requiring a detour plan or notes to be added for the plans for the existing bike path and national road while the bridge work is completed over the CSX Railroad. ODOT is also requiring us to secure waterway permits or request an exception from the Army Corps for this requirement. We'll ask for the exception, but it'll take some time. I'd like to have the money available, if not granted, for the exception. The third item is a change modification to the plans from the original feasibility study that was approved. It is the location of the portion of the path near the parking lot of the park district property near the existing trail. This will require additional soil borings, tech work, and geotech work, and larger mechanically stabilized earth. That's a thing. Walls that are required to support the path. The total cost of these three items is $41,839.23. This amount will be split 50/50 between the city and Five Rivers Metro Park. I'm recommending that we approve the contract modification to move forward with the design of the project. This will require approval of a supplemental appropriation that's on the agenda.
That was 93, I believe.
Yep. Hey, anytime you made me read that, anytime was, would be a good time for a point of order.
Let's actually skip the next time.
The, yeah, let me skip the next time. This part of the Vandelia Bike Way Connector is to acquire necessary right-of-way easements for the construction of the project. Because there's federal funding in the project, there is a specific process that must be followed to acquire the land. Firms must be ODOT-prequalified for the work, and we're recommending entering into an agreement with O.R. Colon Associates, LLC. to perform this work at their submitted cost of $48,315. My apologies.
I was going to stop you, but I was waiting for you to take a breath.
I can breathe in my nose and talk out my mouth. I'm like Kenny G.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-92 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-92 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-93. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract modification for Part II of the design and engineering for the final design of the Vandelia Bike Way Connector with LGB, Inc.
Does your comment stand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-93 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-93 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Mayor Herbs does, yes. Passes seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-94.
Forty-four. All right, got it here somewhere. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a combination jet vacuum truck by the Public Works Department from Best Equipment Company at the Sourcewell Cooperative bidding contract price in the amount of $493,500.
Thank you. Mr. Wimp?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. On behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to include this on the agenda today. This authorizes the purchase of a hydro excavator, the vac truck, for $493,500. $550,000 is budgeted in the capital improvement plan for 2023. We, we've determined that we can save $56,500 by purchasing a 2022 model. There's exactly one of those left, and this legislation will allow us to indicate that we're able to enter into that agreement and make that purchase before the funds become available next year. And so, thank you very much for this.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-R-94 as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 22-R-94 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in their first reading, however, we do have one ordinance in its second reading, being Ordinance 22-44. Mr. Wimp?
I'll read it first. An ordinance rezoning approximately 13.4 acres of land located at 7249 North Dixie Drive from highway business to industrial and amending the zoning map of the city.
Now, Mr. Wimp.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Piper Stamps, has requested a rezoning from highway business to industrial for the 12.4-acre property located at 7249 North Dixie Drive. The purpose of the rezoning request is to allow for a concrete recycling facility. The parcels in question have a 2020 future land use map designation of medium-density residential. The Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend denial of the request. Staff strongly recommends denial of the proposal as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And since this is a ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to deny the ordinance 22-44 in its second reading to be consistent with staff and Planning Commission recommendations.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fars to deny the ordinance at 22-44. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
I'm going to abstain because this does involve an agent in our office, so the motion carries six-one-one.
Motion to deny.
To deny, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay.
Six-zero-one.
Six-zero-one.
Six-zero-one, I'm sorry. All right, next we have emergency ordinance 22-45. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or hurt designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wimp?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent sewer and water, and/or weed cutting.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move, I move to approve ordinance 22-45 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve ordinance 22-45 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have emergency ordinance 22-46.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during calendar year ending December 31, 2022, and amending ordinance 21-31 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wimp?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The Finance Director in Study Session gave a, a very detailed presentation on this. This is an end-of-year supplemental appropriation. We do this at the end of each year to ensure that everything is in compliant, in compliance. Many of the end-of-the-year adjustments are to account for the city's health insurance claim experience. In this case, health insurance, many of the expenses are offset by reimbursement revenues, except for approximately $78,000 in unanticipated claims. You'll recall that the city adjusted the plan year to align with the stop-loss coverage in calendar year. We didn't adjust our self-insured equivalent rates in order to limit the burden on the employees during that adjusted plan year. The alignment of the schedules, and, and so this will just tap into the fund balance of what's there. The alignment of the schedules along with the migration to the United Healthcare Network is expected to result in savings barring catastrophic claims. Other supplemental items include shoring up personnel expenses, additional funds necessary in order to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus. You'll recall the Fire Division got a $225,000 grant for that mandated project. Required transfers from the General Fund to the Safe and Stable Fund, that's equivalent to 0.25% due to increased income tax revenue, fuel costs, and of course, abatement of blight at 841 Spartan Ave., among others. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Got to call a public hearing. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll call a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Now can I have a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve ordinance 22-46 as an emergency.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve ordinance 22-46 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions. The first item is a conditional use at 7249 North Dixie Drive. Mr. Wimp?
Given the rezoning didn't pass, I think the conditional use is null and void and can be moved. I'm, I'm not sure procedurally what that means for us.
Yeah, we can't grant a conditional use if it doesn't get the rezoning. We can go through the motions, or we can just consider the matter moot.
That's a moot point. Okay, we'll move on to the variance at 819 East National Road. Mr. Wimp?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Allison Purdon, I'm sorry, has requested a variance to allow a fuel station on the property located at 819825 and 855 East National Road within 80 feet of another fuel station on the opposite side of the street. The code requires that fuel stations on opposite sides of the street be separated by a minimum of 300 feet. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend denial of the request. Staff agrees with that recommendation. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we deny the variance requested at 819 East National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick to deny the variance at 819 East National Road. Are there any comments from council?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make one comment. We had this same situation, I think it was about a year, a year and a half ago in Vandelia, and it was less than the 300 feet that's, that's the requirement on the City of Vandelia books. So that got denied, and I think in the idea of being consistent, this one looks like it also will be denied.
All right, any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. All right, next we have the Planning Commission meeting minutes along with the Vandelia Arts Council minutes. Those would be items C through P. Any comments on them? Being none, they stand approved. That brings us to the November 2022 bill listing in the amount of $3,484.27, and the November 2022 bill listing in the expenses over $50,000, and the November 2022 purchase card detail. Brings us to comments from council. We'll start with Mr. McDonald.
Just happy holidays to everybody.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wint?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'd just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you. Very thankful for the ability to serve our residents, and naturally, I'm happy to sit down with anyone at a scheduled time to discuss any issues that they might want to bring forward. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Blakesley?
Just want to thank, and I believe it's the Honor Society that delivered the city calendars. Looks very good, and they did a nice job. And happy holidays to all.
All right, thank you. Councilman Folic?
Just to echo the thanks to the Honor Society, just so residents know that that saves the city a lot of money, that we don't have to mail that out, and in turn, we make a contribution to the Honor Society's scholarship fund, so we appreciate that partnership with them. And also, Mr. Wint mentioned earlier, and I know I spoke with Mr. Cron earlier today, but again, a huge thanks to our Public Works employees. I think the only thing that probably would have made this weekend worse is if snow removal was on top of it all, but the amount of hours that those guys put in at those three sites over the weekend is commendable. And I think it just kind of, contrary to what you may read on social media, shows that, you know, we have an aging infrastructure in this town, and we have committed to adjustments to provide the funds that are going to be needed over the next 30, 40 years to continue to fund the improvements that are needed for all of our lateral infrastructure, both water, sewer, and stormwater. So, I don't even want to know what the bill is going to be for this weekend, but it's going to be substantial, I think. So, thanks again to those, that personnel. And again, just to echo, happy holidays to our residents and staff, and look forward to 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farsh?
I want, the water main break gave me an opportunity to discuss with a few citizens the need for infrastructure and paying for it. And it's, it's not something people think about all the time, but that's a perfect example to be able to sit down and say why we had to increase some of our rates. But also, had a great time today. Council was given the opportunity to work with our, go out to our department heads, and I got to go to Parks and Rec and sit and talk to those guys for probably 20 minutes or so. And that was enjoyable, and tell them happy holidays. And we give out a gift certificate, or a ham or a turkey, to the employees, and everybody took a different department, but that was very enjoyable. Thank you, and happy holidays.
All right, thank you. Councilman Ayers?
Yeah, I'd like to say, echo some of the same things. I had the opportunity this afternoon, or this morning, it was this afternoon, to visit the Public Works employees out at the garage and to pass out some Christmas goodies, and they looked tired, worn out, cold, and most of them had been up the entire weekend working on those water main breaks. So, I thanked all of them, it's a, it's a good, hard-working group. So, happy holidays to the, all of the citizens of Vandelia. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
I have none, as they would be redundant, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, I would like to thank staff and council for all the hard work that you've put in this year. I know we've had a lot of challenging items, and we're going to continue having challenging items, but I think we are moving in the right direction, and I'm real happy to, to be working with all of you, and I appreciate what each and every one of you do. I'd also like to make a comment regarding the comments from interested citizens, and I understand where you guys are coming from when you want to gauge where each member stands on this particular issue. I agree with what Councilwoman Farsh said. I think this is not a forum for us to try to debate things. I think it would be in your best interest to contact your council members directly, talk to them very frankly, and get the answers that you, you want from them. With that, I have no further comments. This time, we're going to go into executive, executive session. It's recommended that council enter into executive session